Can we come to order, please?
That's fine.
Sure.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening. We'll start with the reception of visitors. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak to the board about any matter coming in front of the board today. Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry.
Just come as you are.
I'm going too fast. Approval of minutes. We have a minutes from June 16th of the business enclosed meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes as read.
I'll second that.
Terry moves, Mike seconds.
Okay. Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Julia Buckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
Thank you.
We will now pass for the first reception of visitors and go on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. The first report is the state of the district report, and I'm going to make a brief overview. I'll try to make a brief overview, and Ms. Accardi will make a brief presentation of data, and she will try to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Dr. McDonald.
The board, I think, is familiar with the format that we've used in this report in the past, and it, as it continues to grow, it's not my intent to go through every part of it. I will, in fact, try to highlight. I do want to call the board's attention to a couple changes in the report. One is that we have, over the course of the year, we've made many reports pertaining to the strategic plan, and so embedded now in the action section are links, so that the reader can look at the link and get a, see an audio-visual report about that particular part of the plan. We think that will enhance the understanding of the plan. Also, we have several tasks that are essentially completed, things that we have struggled with in the past in a couple cases, things that we're very proud of, like the transition facility that was finished and occupied on time, on budget, and those are also highlighted in the report. Also, you have, although we're not going to make a special presentation about this tonight, you'll have at your tables. We've gone through and looked at the accomplishments of the plan over the first four years. Mrs. Browning put this together. It's a very attractive document. Additionally, we've gone through and looked at the things that we haven't really covered yet in the plan, and our intent is to make a presentation either in August or September about both of these to give us some sense of what we have to go, where we have to go in the future. You could be surprised, because we have, in fact, accomplished quite a bit, which is the purpose of the plan. In the first place, I recall when we started down this road, we were warned that worst possible thing is if it sits on the shelf. It hasn't sat on the shelf here, and we've actually accomplished quite a bit. Okay, to go through quickly, the first strategic goal area, curriculum instruction assessment. One of the things we've worked very hard on is intervening with students, and as you can see, we've continued to increase the number of interventions recorded by classroom teachers now, we're almost 20,000. And we've also met our goal for the year of 90 percent of all grades A, B, and C, and only 10 percent of all grades D and F. That was our goal, and we hope to hit that every year. Additionally, that, one of the issues important to the board is what we do with the student in the middle who's not necessarily a gifted student and not a special needs student. An average student in the past may not have gone to college. One of our solutions was the Avid program. We held the first year of that program this year. The students in the program earned a 3.02 grade average first semester and a 3-point grade average second semester. Bearing in mind that each person in the program was taking at least one rigorous or AP course, so that's very laudable. They also maintained very good attendance. We have a sec. They will return for a second year in 2014-15, and we recruited a second class to come in as freshmen for 2014-15. We've continued to develop rigorous coursework and encourage kids to take it. We've had in the past year over, we had 919 students enrolled in an AP course. They took 700, 700, excuse me, 1,741 AP exams. That's more than a 10 percent increase in the number of students enrolled in AP courses. So we've continued to promote that. Our counselors have, our teachers have, and we're bearing fruit, and that's one of the reasons we are mentioned again in the U.S. News Report list of outstanding high schools. We have finally succeeded in evaluating our co-teaching model. We found that we can quantitatively evaluate the model. We believe it is working, and we now have a structure for which to evaluate that on a regular basis. Similarly, we have, but we've come to the point where we basically believe that the reading staff development is essentially the same at each campus, which has been one of our goals for a number of years. And Mrs. Accardi's going to report on how we've evaluated the effect of some of that staff development. In terms of STEM, which is another program that would encourage a student in the middle to pursue their interest in science, mathematics, engineering, and technology. This past year, we had 211 students enrolled in a STEM curricula for the first time, and those students were, for the most part, successful learners, earning As, Bs, and Cs in those courses, and we've developed more STEM curriculum for 2014-15. In terms of facilities, we've already covered that. We successfully completed the transition program facility. Are we having AV problems here?
We're having technological difficulties.
Yes, mine did as well. Okay, then you'll have to listen to me.
You've got hard copies, though. That's good.
Obviously completed the transition facility, and we are now in the midst of a master facility planning. We spent a lot of time with our school staff at this, to this point, and next year, we begin to go out into the community and talk to parents and community members. In terms of technology, I'm not going to go into that, because you're about to hear a report. In terms of resources, personnel, staff development, and finances, you will receive a report also tonight about finances, but in terms of personnel, we've continued to do our work in terms of recruiting a more diverse workforce. We've worked very hard with our teachers association, develop a common understanding, and articulate the teacher evaluation process in the district, and we've continued to work on encouraging teachers and supporting them as they pursue national board certification. I believe 12 have, are at the point where they have some of their materials for recognition.
Is that your fault?
In terms of communications, we did, in fact, have a follow-up of our initial communication survey. I've listed some of the findings. We did develop a list of key communicators, and we did provide media training to the board that everyone, at least the feedback I received, was relatively successful. In terms of the community, we continue to work with the Downers Grove Chamber of Commerce, which has now merged into a Downers Grove-Woodridge Chamber of Commerce. We think that's a really good development. And also, we've worked with the Downers Grove Economic Development Corporation. And finally, in terms of systematic assessment, which Ms. Accardi's going to report about, continue to work on ways to quantitatively analyze our programs to make sure they're working, and obviously, at some point, we hope to use that to justify not doing programs in the future that are not working. Frankly, that's what, that's what the optimum condition would be, because everything requires resources. We want to spend our resources on things that work. To that end, Gina's going to make a brief report about reading achievement, literacy achievement in the district. This is a follow-up to a report she made last year.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. So as Dr. McDonald said, I'm going to report on one of our indicators that we use to evaluate reading for our students. This is a follow-up from last time. One of the reasons why I'm reporting on reading is because it relates to several of the board goals that Dr. McDonald just talked about. So not just about data, but about our literacy program, our interventions, so on and so forth. We use the Performance Series reading test for, really for main reasons. We use it as a placement indicator largely for our eighth grade students that are coming to us. Any student who scores below a certain level on the explore test, either in reading or composite, we have take this Performance Series reading test. As you may recall from when I reported last year, the Performance Series reading test is a computer-adapted test. So what essentially happens is, it's obviously taken on a computer, and as students answer questions, either right or wrong, it scales up the rigor of those questions up or down. And so it really gives us a nice evaluation of how the student is doing in a number of different ways. So we use it as a placement indicator for those eighth graders. We also use it as students transfer to us, because that helps us to place them in the proper English class and social studies predominantly, and also to determine whether or not they needed a direct reading instruction course. We also use it as a diagnostic. This is mostly for students who are in our reading program, and it provides a ton of data. There's so much data that you, that teachers can actually bring out of the program to let them know what targeted instruction they need to do with those students. And they can really tailor the instruction, then, to meet the needs of not just the group of students, but individual students as well. It's also used to differentiate instruction, and this is across the board, mostly in English and social studies, but those scores through our e-school system, which is our student information system, Rod developed a program where those scores can be housed in that system, and teachers can pull it up for their classes. So they can create reading groups, they can create differentiated assignments, they can really tailor instruction to meet the needs of the students in the class. And then we also use it to monitor progress. And I'm really going to report more today on that progress monitoring, because we monitor progress, as you heard, I believe it was at the last board meeting, Scott referenced the co-teaching data, and he used Performance Series data as one of the indicators. So we do look at it for groups of students, but we also look at it holistically, so like all freshmen, all sophomores. By building, we look at it, by teacher in some cases, because individual teachers have access. I'm going to share with you, of course, district data, and then we also look at it for certain groups. So in looking at that data, we're talking here about averages. So the average scale score, the scale score is how, one way in which Performance Series measures student growth, because that's what we're looking for, is student growth over time. And those scale scores can range anywhere from 1,300 to 3,700. And as you can see, this is three classes of freshman students, and you'll note the gain each year. We're obviously projecting up, which is what we want to do. You'll note, for example, with the class of 2015, they had the largest gain at 70, a little over 73 scaled score points. We would expect that. So if students come in at a lower rate, they're going to gain more than those students that are coming in at a higher rate. And then obviously, you see with the class of 2016, which actually had the lowest score, but a substantially greater number of students were actually tested. We've been using this test for about the last three years. We just expanded it the last couple of years. So we've been testing more students in the last couple of years than we did the first year. And then if we look at all freshmen, so I take those groups, and now we're looking at about 2,700 students, you'll note the average gain there is about 36 scaled score points. So students are moving up. I should point out, you might notice that some of the number of testes may differ. We're looking at those students who have both a quarter one and a quarter four score. So if a student leaves us after quarter one, we have no way to measure that growth. So you will note on some of the slides, a different number, in part because we're looking for students that have each one of those scores. The sophomore students, and we really, in the last couple of years, started testing our sophomores, so I only have two years of data for you on that, they also gained quite a bit. Ironically, the class of 2015 gained 36 points. We had greater gain in the freshman year, but as I said, as they move up in terms of those scaled score points, the gain would be, of course, less. And then as we look at the sophomores holistically, we notice about a 26 average gain. I think really the most important data is really how students are doing as they're progressing with us, so more than one year of data. And what I like about this is it kind of shows first quarter to fourth quarter of freshman year, then first quarter of sophomore year to fourth quarter. You'll note that the gains are very different. For example, the class of 2016, from first quarter to fourth quarter, the gain was only a little over 18 scaled score points, but yet if you look at the class of 2015, in that same time, we're looking at about 71. So it does vary. There are different groups of students. We are getting substantial numbers, because again, we're looking at students that have all four of those scores. What I find really interesting about this data, as opposed to last year's data, we saw a slight decline or pretty much staying the same over the summer, right? So from quarter four freshman year to quarter one sophomore year, we see that obviously pretty close to the class of 2015, but if you look at the class of 2016, they actually went up, which was a bit of a surprise when I looked at that data. What's also interesting is with the class of 2016, which overall gained about 54 scaled score points, they actually entered in the 70th percentile, which is quite good, but they exited after the second year in the 80th percentile. So that was nice to see that growth. The class of 2015 actually gained more in terms of scaled score points, but still remaining within that same decile band.
Ms. Accardi, couldn't you also argue that regardless of where you start, you're at the end of the fourth quarter of your sophomore year, you're in the general neighborhood?
Absolutely.
I mean, I think that's probably a very, very positive aspect of that as well, is regardless of where you come in at our schools, here's where you're going to finish after the second year. I think that's commendable.
Absolutely. And having students ending in the 70th, and it's the upper 70th, and in fact, with the class of 2015, they missed that 80th percentile by just a couple of points. And of course, there's a margin of error with any data point. So to end in the 80th percentile, I think, is really fantastic. And it goes to show that while students are coming to us on the average strong, they are becoming stronger as they're with us in just a couple of years. And then, of course, we look at averages. So now we're taking those students. Now, these are, again, are students who have a quarter one and quarter four score, so the number is a little bit different than on the last slide, but again, you see a gain of the class of 2016 at about 56 scaled score points and 107 for the class of 2015. So substantial gains entering and increasing their standing within the decile and even moving forward or moving up one. Most importantly, in terms of our reading program, and this is how, of course, this all relates to reading, but when we look at our reading program, our direct reading instruction classes, these are classes called Strategies for Academic Success. You may recall, we just added different levels. We now have a tiered direct reading instruction program, so we had advanced strategies for both sophomores and juniors. But we looked at, because we wanted the most number of students, so we're looking at a number of 430, which is a substantial number over the last couple of years. And we looked at those students who all enrolled in the full year Strategies course and how they moved from quarter one to quarter four, and that, of course, is what I'm most proud of, because we're showing a gain of 92 points. And we're also showing these students gaining an entire decile again. And I want to point out, these are our lowest level readers. These are students who are coming to us a couple of grade levels, in some cases, in some cases, it might be one grade level, but in a couple cases, in many cases, it's more than one grade level below. And they are increasing, and they're increasing not just in their over scale score points, but as we break it down into the diagnostics, they're increasing grade level, they're increasing lexile, they're increasing fluency. I mean, it's all moving in the right direction, vocabulary, all of those. So this is, I think, the point that I'm most proud of, is that our students, and we have a large enough number, last year I reported on it, but again, you may recall, my concern was that we didn't have huge numbers. And now we're showing with over 400 students that that gain is substantial. So I just wanted to share with you a few data points to kind of give you a sense of the monitoring that we do. We also look at it in a couple of other ways. This was kind of a bird's eye district level, not separating it by groups, but you heard some of that, as I said, when Scott reported on the co-teaching. But just wanted to give you a view of one of the data points and how we look at different data sets to determine if our programs are effective.
I had one.
Sure.
It was concerning the Avid program.
Oh, okay.
And I noticed in the data, it's just a quick question, but there were, it said that there were 26, 26 freshmen at North and 23 at South, and then sophomores, 25 at both. And I'm just wondering, just because of the sheer size level of South versus North, why there isn't more at South.
With Avid, we purposely went in and said we are going to have one class at each grade level. Not the first year. First year was just freshmen. So now, next year, we'll have a freshman class in each building and a sophomore class. So we're limited by that component. One of the factors in determining the right students for Avid is that individual determination. That's what the I stands for, that individual determination, that the students really want to be in the program. And as we've worked through that criteria, that does impact the numbers. We started with actually a little bit more, a couple more students at South, but when they realized what the program was, like over the summer, even though we did interviews, we did a lot of articulation, we had meetings, we did a lot, we did have students who decided not to either continue in the program or change their schedule at the final moment. And we do have students, I'll be quite frank, we do have students who were in it freshman year that have decided not to matriculate in that program into sophomore year, and that's for a variety of reasons. One thing we have to keep in mind with Avid is it is an elective course within the master schedule, so that takes a period for that student. One student I know for a fact, for the 1314 school year that dropped, was, had to make a decision between banned and Avid, and ultimately, that student chose banned. So students are not necessarily continuing in it, all of them, but the reasons, we've done, had a lot of conversations determining why that is, and a lot of times, it's factors that are beyond the program.
Okay. Thank you.
That raises another question. Do you feel those who decide not to go on have made enough progress, or do you have enough data yet to know that they really are going to be more successful as time goes on?
I think, I think it's so individualized for each student. So it's really hard to tell. We've had very, very involved conversations to determine that.
I'm sure.
I don't think, and most of you know that I like data, but.
Don't read it.
Yeah. I don't think the data's there yet to really prove whether or not they're ready.
I was just curious.
Right. And many of them are still going on to take an honors or an accelerated course. So even though they're not in Avid, they're still going to take.
Pushing themselves.
Those courses. And we have several supports for students who aren't even in Avid. So for example, for students next year who are going to be in our AP Chemistry, we have a summer enrichment AP Chemistry bridge. So for those students, they could enroll in that. We have resource centers in some cases where students who need help or need more support can go to. So it's not like we're leaving them without any supports.
Got it. Thanks.
Is there, Gina, is there a point at which we'll evaluate whether or not we want to add additional classes?
I think there will be a point where we need to decide if we're going to keep it at one course. I'm not exactly sure when that point will be. Typically, I like to look at a program for about three years. People who analyze data often say you need about three years to kind of really know what the data's telling. You don't want to look at just one class. There are a number of schools that have more Avid classes than we do, and when I've met with those, for example, I have a district director, so to talk about how they did that, a lot of them advanced over time. So I think we really need to think about that and determine if we really have enough students meeting the criteria. Again, it's for underrepresented students, it's for first-generation collegegoers, it's for students who fall within the middle in terms of test scores, it's for students who have that individual determination, it's for students that might be in a special circumstance. There might be special circumstances where a student may not fit into any of those parameters, but might still be in the program. And so I think as we evolve that profile a little bit from the first year, of course, we're learning as we go along, we'll be able to better answer that down the road. I'm not sure at this point we have enough.
We'd also, I even, might even consider doing four years, because if a big portion of, or big emphasis of this is college matriculation, we really want to see.
Right.
Ideally, we'd like every one of these students to matriculate at college, or expect to matriculate at college after being in the program for four years.
That was the goal.
That was the goal. That is the goal.
All along.
Right.
But I think to Deb's point, it would be, I think it'd be worth knowing how many eligible people there were who, for whatever reason.
Yes, right.
Did not make it into. So if at four years, we say, or five years, or six years, we say this really is worthwhile, how many more classes do we need to add?
Well.
Not necessarily that people have been excluded, you know, I mean, people are getting into the course for whatever reason, for a number of reasons.
Sure.
But so that we had some idea about where we were going, where we were going to grow it, if we did want to grow it.
I can tell you, both years at both buildings, we had between 40 and 50 students apply. We do conduct interviews, so we interview the students at their school. So we went to all the schools, there's an entire site team, so we did interview those students. There were some that simply did not meet the profile but still applied, and there were some after the interview that maybe weren't as interested. But we do go through, it's a long process that takes a couple of months to really hone into what is the right profile of the student.
Do we, do we do anything to find students?
We do an articulation with our associated districts. So for example, all the principals were invited, actually met in this room in September. We're doing it a little bit differently for next year, where we hold parent meetings at night for the parents to come in and learn about the program, ask questions. It was really nice this year, although we had the parent meeting at the same night in both buildings, so I could only attend one, and I did attend North. But it was really nice because we had the Avid freshmen speaking to the students and the parents, and that, I think it made a world of difference. Pretty sure we couldn't do that, because we didn't have any students in the program, obviously.
Yeah.
But that was really, it was really a win-win, and it, you know, from the input I got from South, it was just as positive at South as it was at North.
Excellent.
But we're looking into not just having a parent meeting in our buildings, but we're looking at possibly hosting one like in Woodridge or somewhere so that more parents can, can come. It's, it's an involved program. It really is. We have a site team, we have about 21 people involved in that, teachers and administrators. We go to summer training. It's, it's a really comprehensive program.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So mine doesn't work at it anyway, so I'm sorry.
Another strategic plan goal has been to develop over a period of time a vision of instructional technology and a plan for implementing a large-scale instructional technology model. We have spent an incredible amount of time, certainly people in this room have spent an incredible amount of time. You have a 20-page report, is that correct?
Twenty-four.
Sorry? Twenty-four pages.
Twenty-plus.
Mr. Rousseau and Mrs. Accardi also promised to synthesize that report into the highlights, but I don't want to diminish the amount of effort and the amount of time that scores of people have spent on this, the amount of research done, contacting other schools, the amount of work teachers have done in classrooms about implementing different technologies, the amount of staff development that's occurred. And I can't under, undervalue any of that, because this plan basically reflects all of it. So Rod and Gina, you're on.
Okay. Thank you. Would like to point out that the PowerPoint is really just a guide through that, I believe we said, 24-page document. It's not meant to necessarily give you all the information you need, but kind of guide where we're at within that document and within the presentation. Like to also point out that the goal, as Dr. McDonald said, for this year was to create a roadmap, a plan for instructional technology, and that is the document that you have. And part of the reason that it is so long is to kind of show you what, what we've done over the course of really the last couple of years in research, in communication, in our own pilot within that you heard about just, I believe it was just last month or a couple of months ago. So in terms of the strategic plan, this really relates to a multitude of goals, not just 3.1C, which is about the instructional technology vision, but certainly, it is woven throughout many of. throughout many of the goals. And one of the things that's important here is that it really isn't a tech plan, it's a learning plan. This is our one-to-one learning initiative. It isn't about the device itself, it's about student learning, it's about teaching and student learning. And so when we think about it that way, the focus of the plan has to be on curricular goals. The focus is not on the device, but on the curriculum, how it's delivered, what the student outcomes are, student learning, how that can be enhanced through the one-to-one technology. Again, that learning focus, and you heard just a couple of months ago from some of our pilot teachers about how instruction changed and how student learning changed in the classroom, and that's our overall goal, is for instruction to be more student-centered, to problem-solving, more authentic experiences for our students, which is in alignment with our new state standards, about students having 24/7 access. That was the goal of that entire plan, is about giving students access beyond the school. And within, of course, within the school. Are you driving? Our vision for student learning is about making students and providing an environment where students can be collaborative, reflective, and empowered. And we gave you some examples of what that looks like. A student who's collaborative, and this really fits in with our professional development that we already have, cooperative learning, assessment literacy, and Project CRIS, which is literacy-based. A student that is collaborative is one that obviously works in a cooperative manner with not just other students, but the teacher as well. A student who is involved in shared decision-making, a student that is working towards a common goal, not just their own competitive goal of how they're doing on something, but that collaboration, those skills that really extend far beyond high school. A reflective student, of course, we're looking for the student to be intrinsically motivated, that student to really reflect on his or her learning and take it to the next step, that metacognition. We're looking for a stu, we're looking for this to help empower students to be more reflective, to really improve upon their learning, to really reach those students that we've talked about before that may not be as motivated as we'd like them to be, kind of those demotivated students. What that might look like in a classroom will vary, but it will look like problem-solving, it'll look like a student-centered classroom, not the teacher in the front of the room lecturing for forty minutes. About students teaching each other, kind of those study groups that many of us were involved in in college. About students questioning and inquiry and doing research, and not research just to do it because that's the assignment my teacher has given me, but rather research because I care about this, this is that authentic audience point that's part of the ELA writing standards. And really woven throughout the ELA standards, not just the writing standards. We feel strongly that our current professional development, which is again, the Project CRIS, the cooperative learning assessment literacy, are certainly in line with that, but we're really excited about the new strand that's beginning this fall, which is differentiated instruction. We feel that this initiative fits most closely with that, and we are weaving the technology into it. So that one-to-one learning isn't about the technology, but as we're creating this strand, it is key to that strand for teachers. And the foundation, of course, of differentiated instruction is really targeting in, on not just groups of students, in some cases, it might be groups of students, but also individual students. So not just teaching to the middle or to the class, but teaching those individual students as well. We are looking for this, and this is why the one-to-one learning is so important, this isn't about students typing a paper on a computer. We're looking for transformational change. We're looking for a complete shift in how we teach and how students learn. We're looking for that student engagement, again, reaching out to all students. We're looking for this initiative to extend beyond the classroom, beyond the four walls, I should say, of the classroom. We're looking for students to be committed to inquiry-based learning, to student-centered learning, to their own learning, to be responsible for that, accountable for that. We're looking for teachers to engage students in those types of activities that can be done, or better done, through the use of technology. We're looking for students to be helping other students, we're looking for students to work together. The vision for this is that for it to be successful, it isn't about just handing students devices. It's about really transforming the way we teach so that student learning and student achievement is increased. Oh, I'm sorry. We went too far.
We're both driving.
I'm sorry.
It's so nice to be able to present with Gina today. I think that just underscores, again, the learning component is so critical to what we're doing.
She's awesome.
I didn't start, Gina did, so that's just fantastic. As Mark alluded to, we've visited with and talked with a number of districts to get information. We've really involved, we've taken our time to try to get as much information from as many different sources, internal and external, as we can. There's a number of high school districts in the Chicagoland area that are pretty well along in their one-to-one initiatives. So we definitely, we did site visits, we use them a lot, as well as other districts across the country, I mean, the reality. And the plan has quite a number of takeaways that we got from those districts. A couple to highlight would be that clearly the establishment of a learning-based vision is critical, involving stakeholders certainly is critical, students, parents, staff. There's no one way, or there's no right way to do this, really. We're all doing the same thing, but each district has its own climate, culture, and needs. So we're all going about the same thing in slightly different ways, and that's okay. A couple interesting things is, a lot of people might think that once computers, devices are in students' hands in a classroom, that managing that classroom would be just crazy. We pretty much, from, again, from teachers in other districts that we talked with, said that really isn't the case. Classroom management has been an issue since there's been desks and chairs and students in them. So with the right techniques, there's ways to deal with that. One thing we heard across the board from everyone is that student engagement was both a focus and something that was really a demonstrable thing that people could look at and point to, and say that when, that one-to-one learning was in place, that engagement improved. Project RED, you saw some information on that in the plan, that's basically a research organization out there that really gave us some, us in many districts, good information and assistance with the whole transformational change aspect that Gina talked with, and some planning and implementation help. Through involving staff and students in this process, through the pilot and site visits, their input is definitely included and vital. Next year, we plan to dramatically increase that, to really get it really strongly at that stakeholder involvement piece. Finally, a critical thing for us in terms of data gathering and input is, we're a high school district, we have K-8 districts that we're associated with that feed into us, but for our parents and our kids, they have a K-12 experience. So we're all different districts, and we'll all do things in our own ways, but we need to communicate and understand what everyone is doing. And in the plan, you'll see kind of a detailed breakdown of Gina and I's conversations with all of those districts, but a number of things are common amongst all of them. One is that they all very definitely are on a one-to-one learning path, some farther along than others. All of them to a T are just, the whole idea that this is a learning initiative is just crystal clear and very strong in everything that they say and do. So it's very good that we're parallel with that, and there's a good foundation that's being built there. A couple of the feeders are planning to be fully one-to-one in the fifteen-sixteen school year, with others following shortly behind that as well. So they are definitely in the pipeline, and it's nice to have that communication open. And as you heard at the May board meeting about our pilot, we had a great success with that and got some great feedback and some great information about that as well. I promise not to talk about technology too much because we've underscored that this is a learning initiative, but as much as it is a learning initiative, technology is critical, albeit it should be invisible to really what's going on, it really needs to be that way. After our infrastructure upgrade, we've continued to monitor and adjust as we need. You may recall that periodically, I like to conduct an outside assessment of our network and infrastructure and security, just to have someone from the outside take a look at what we're doing. And this spring, I, in fact, I'm just waiting for the final report now, but we did it a little bit differently this time. We looked at holistically, how are we doing as a technology organization within the district? How are we doing with communicating and the kind of service that we provide and things like that? And then we also looked at the technical aspects of things as well. And we scored very, very well on both. We got some good feedback from a survey that was done with some great positive and some suggestions and ways that we could improve. Our technical score was quite high, in the ninety-fifth percentile of districts that are our size, so much credit to the tech staff for that. We do have a few bottlenecks to address, which the report pointed out and we were aware of as well, so we are going to work on those. You know, we piloted the Chromebook devices, and we intend to continue to pilot those in this next school year with a larger group of students. It comes, when it comes down to device, every district has their own needs and their own issues, and it's really, I think it's really about providing students a device that will give them most of what they need most of the time. I mean, there's really, I don't think, going to be a perfect device out there for all the situations, but we've really had good success with that device so far. A majority of our feeder districts, in their upper-grade level students, like three, four to eighth grade students, they're using Chromebooks. Most of the K to two students are using iPads. I will say, with the caveat being that technology overall is changing so rapidly, and especially in the mobile device type of arena, this is clearly the device that we think is the right one to go forward with at this point. Two or three years from now, I can't even imagine to guess, and I wouldn't guess for you, what Chromebooks will look like then, if there'll be a different device that at that time would better serve our students' needs. So we will definitely, this will be a very fluid process, and I know that can be kind of frustrating that you don't know all the answers for a long term, but things are changing so incredibly fast, it will definitely be a fluid event.
So I mentioned before about some of the professional development strands that we offer, and how technology is really part of those strands, as well as the new strand that is coming onboard for the fourteen-fifteen school year, which is differentiated instruction. That said, we still plan to offer, we continue to offer, really, some of the technology training that we have. So for example, we have training for Google apps. We are a Google district, and so we train teachers on how to use Google apps, as well as support staff members. We know, as I believe Rod said, that there has been a lot of people who've wondered about classroom management. And so as we move forward, even though, as Rod said, there have been management issues since there have been students and desks, we know that that's something that we might need to have some PD on. And I think one of the things that was really important was on our last institute day, Teacher Institute, June 12th. As we had the pilot teachers talk about their experience with the pilot, and I was in both buildings, and in one building specifically, they brought up management issues. And it was really interesting to hear from the teachers how really that wasn't a problem. And one simply said, when we're not using the devices, they close the lids. And it was, there were many people in the audience who were like, oh, okay. So really, I think some of the issues that concern people really are not as much of an issue as they might be, but it's our responsibility through professional development to meet the needs that are there. So we will also obviously continue thinking about and planning for the professional development that we will provide as we move forward with this initiative. As we talk about student learning, and I spoke in many ways about that before, we, of course, are tying this in with our movement towards the new Illinois learning standards, through our work with the ELA standards specifically. As we shared, I believe it was last month, that our focus for the next school year related to the writing standards, but really woven throughout the speaking and listening, the writing, the reading standards, is on argument. And so certainly, we are working to embed this initiative within that. When we talk about what a one-to-one District 99 learner looks like, it's again, not about the device, it's about what does learning look like, and how will this device be a tool that enables students to get there, enables teachers to get them there. The other thing I think that is really important that I didn't mention earlier is that in terms of student learning, through the use of devices, teachers are able to use other methods for formative assessment. I believe you heard Ms. Moore, who's a teacher at North High, one of the pilot teachers, talk about how she uses them as clickers, and how students can respond, and she can use this for immediate results, so that she can tailor instruction, not just the next day, but within that class period. She knows what students are missing. Or engage them in reflection about that, you know, how confident do you feel about meeting this student learning outcome or objective? And I think that's really important as we think about student learning, because again, we want the students to be responsible for their learning. Our plan for next year is exciting. We had an outpouring of teachers interested in being involved in an extended pilot. This extended pilot is a district-funded pilot, so students are not paying for the devices. Our plan is for fifteen hundred students next year to have a Chromebook. That equates out to thirty-seven teachers. Teachers had to apply, there was an entire process for this. Thirty-four different courses. When I say courses, I mean like Global Connections, English One, Chemistry, those are courses. Within those thirty-four courses, eighty-eight different sections, so eighty-eight different classes of students within those thirty-four courses. So it's a pretty expanded pilot from what we did this year, and far-reaching. So we're not looking at just certain levels of students, so for example, all students that fall within our general regular level population, or just honors students, or just students who may be demotivated or in reading support classes, it's pretty much across the board. One of the topics actually we just discussed, Avid. One of our Avid teachers is piloting the Chromebooks with her Avid class, actually, it's the sophomore-level Avid class. But we have teachers in English, in fine arts, in our reading program, math, science, social studies, special education, and world language. So it's a far-reaching pilot, students from many different levels, so freshmen through seniors, pretty much most departments, and we're going to be gathering data, as we did from our initial pilot, on the results of having a Chromebook 24/7 for students. Teachers are very excited about this. These teachers attended, and as you know, North High, we hosted the Google Symposium just back in June, and the pilot teachers attended that and really came back excited. I actually met with some of them sort of informally during some of our lunches, and we're really excited and already planning for how they're going to use this in the classroom, and now, just a month.
By now. Is it really?
So what happens after that? We've got, we told you certainly about the pilot for next year, and I would qualify the pilot, that term is an interesting term because it means different things to different people. I've come to call it almost a field test from my work decades ago in developing software. We would develop new software and be designed, and there'd be lots of back and forth, and I think it should do this or that. When that was kind of settled, you needed to put it out in the real environment and find out what you don't know, and how does it operate under stress, and what kind of procedures maybe do we need to put in place? That's really what we're doing next year, is we're almost simulating a larger-scale rollout of one-to-one learning in order to really get a good feel for doing this for real, what is that really like, what do we have to have in place? So... to have in place? So next steps for next year, for now, and into next year, are basically to move into that pilot field test and go ahead and execute that. As Gina said, there's a tremendous amount of data, though, that we intend to get out of that. And I believe there's a number of key questions that we need to ask and answer, but a few of the key questions that I bring to your attention are, as a district administrative staff and as a district, we'll need to determine, when do we intend to be fully one-to-one? We're not really doing the pilot to decide, should we go in a one-to-one direction or not. We are, the question will be, at what point do we want to reach that point where we are one-to-one, where every student is in a one-to-one learning environment, where they have a mobile device 24/7? Funding is obviously a key part of that. In talking with many districts that are doing one-to-one, there's a continuum of options that districts use. Some districts fund the devices completely. Some districts basically ask the families to purchase a particular device. Many districts fall in the middle. So those are the kind of discussions that we'll have to have next year to see where that falls. We'll also need to take a look at what are some of the key objectives or key expectations that we have for the program and for the people involved. And finally, as Gina talked about, the transformational change that we're looking at making, we really truly don't want to lose sight of that and focus on that. So that will have to be an ongoing, significant conversation during the year to make sure that we clearly remain focused on that transformational change, that we don't get too caught up in the devices and that aspect of it. That's probably really the much harder thing to do than implementing a device. The devices, the tech stuff, it's complicated, but it's probably easy compared to that type of change that we're talking about there. So basically, next year, we're collecting data, we're processing those questions, tremendously involve our stakeholders, a lot more, students, staff, and parents, with the idea next year that we'll be back with you again during the year with a recommendation as far as here's how we would proceed in 15, 16, with what we would envision being, you know, phase one of our true one-to-one implementation. And I wish I could tell you exactly right now what that's going to look like, but again, there's still a lot of processing, a lot of discussions and decisions that we need to make as we move forward in that direction. And I think that is, sorry about that, that is it for us? Anything else to add, Gina, before we ask for questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for that great presentation.
Yes.
Is anybody any questions?
Pretty exciting.
I don't think lack of questions is lack of interest. Are you moving to end of the year financial report?
Actually, Mr. Stalen is going to present three financial reports. End of the year report, the report about the tentative budget, and a report about potentially refunding bonds. They're all interrelated, and I'll let him begin.
Since Friday, actually, we were talking about these three, several administrators, and realized that they're so interrelated, probably to help the whole conversation, I would do them all together. We'd put them in that order anyways, but so I took all those, not all of them, but key pieces from the individual reports. I'm going to present it together. We'll certainly have an opportunity for you to ask questions regarding any of them. There's a lot in those three reports. I'm going to try and keep this at a higher level, maybe what we would consider the board level, you know, rather than for individuals who, and the audience who might not have seen some of these things on a quarterly basis or an ongoing basis, but I'm going to try and keep it at the board level with certainly an opportunity to go deeper if we like. So the first of the three interrelated topics, really, the 13, 14 year-end report, I'm going to hit some highlights on that. And really the key of that, those quarterly reports are really to help us, you know, build the next year's budget, and throw those things forward that we see changing in the budget during the course of the year that we think will impact future operations. And so that's what we glean from that report. The next thing I'll do is the 14, 15 tentative budget, where that is, the highlights there, and go through the legal requirements and the timeline for upcoming board meetings. And then the call of and refunding of the 2004 bonds. But I thought in order to do that, it would be helpful, I think at one time I had a conversation with one of the board members months and months ago, that it would be helpful to see the whole long-term debt picture every once in a while, because I really don't throw that in front of you too often. It's something we do in the background, unless we have a refunding, so I'm going to take this opportunity to throw that in front of you, and let you see the bigger picture from my perspective of that. So the year-end report quarterly, again, is just to, you know, the disclaimer, it's a cash basis, it's without early taxes. The June collections that we get at the very last month of our fiscal year are, by policy, deferred into the following fiscal year. Those are referred to as early taxes, because you get them before the start of your normal fiscal year that they're intended to fund. And then a plus or minus, very large revenue-expense items are the only adjustments we make, and this year, the only adjustments I've made to the cash basis information are the state and federal receivables. So you'll see that in a minute. The comprehensive annual financial report, just a reminder, that will have all modified accrual adjustments. It's audited by an independent CPA firm. Certainly has a lot more financial data and issues, and that is really the best picture of our exact financial condition. Again, this report is primarily just to help us monitor our operations. So here's the year-end balance, fund balance recap. Key things here, again, I know you've seen this many times, we did end up with a small $203,000 deficit, you know, quarter of a percent. I'm actually fairly pleased that we're within that range. Usually, we try and keep within 1% to 1.5%. So it looks, and I'll tell you, from my perspective, it looks great, but I also know that there's adjustments that'll hit this going back and forth. I don't think it'll be materially different from this. It'll probably, when we look at our CAFR, it'll probably be an improved picture, because there's things that the CAFR brings into our financial health that helps us see the entire picture in much more detail and much more finite basis. A big thing would be our health insurance reserve. When we charge expenses off for benefits to pay into that fund, and our claims actually come in less than what we are paying into it in our premiums, we own that fund, and it's really composite. Some of that, it all shows up in our fund balances at the end in our CAFR. So the additional amount that we build up that fund comes in as an asset. Now, we know that that asset is based on premiums, not just from the district, but also our employees, and so we don't think it's something we would just readily attach and spend, but it helps us buffer the cost of any future benefit increases. So, and again, it's grown again this year, so we'll have another positive year. So there's things like that that are really much more detailed. But I'm still very pleased that we're so close on the revenues and expenditures, and that's really the bottom line of this recap. It shows us where we ended up on a cash basis. Year-end revenues collected, and again, that's a term I use very purposely. It's revenues collected, it's not revenues on an accrual basis, it's just revenues we collected, it's cash basis. Really very tight, you know, it's a couple hundred thousand under budget. It's pretty good, I think. There are going to be some receivables. Now, I did adjust for state aid receivable and some federal aid receivable. The state has been catching up on their amounts that they owe districts. Again, the way that they've been doing it is they've been prorating what they pay, and so it's like saying, well, we owe you $100,000, but we're going to prorate that to $80,000, and that way we can catch up on what we owe you. It's basically what's happened. They've prorated some of these items a little bit deeper and paid what they've allocated in some areas. So, but they have, honestly, they have caught up on, it's like $300,000 that they owe us. It was as high as $1.8 million several years back. So they have caught up. It was about $900,000 last year for comparison. So I made those adjustments on the state line items. To go down, just the second line down is the replacement taxes. That's been a positive thing, and it really shows that commerce in the state, at least taxable commerce, is growing, and it is starting to come back. That's kind of an indicator of the economy for us. It's a, you know, quite a lagging indicator, but it's something that's a positive thing to see it growing. We've had a couple of years where it's been growing and it's exceeding budget, because we usually base each budget year on the prior year's actual, or something close to it. Interest income is down, also 70% of budget, but we do have tax anticipation warrants, which again, cash basis, we haven't collected those. They're still, some are due in July, some are due in September. And we have longer-term investments in the working cash fund that we don't accrue that in yet. So I think we're okay on the interest income eventually. If we get down into food services, that's down a bit from budget. It's down from last year's actual. So part of that, though, is that we have more students that were using the National School Lunch Program, so we're not collecting money in the cafeteria for them. And if you look down at the bottom, the federal aid is overcollected, and that's because there's been more reimbursement from the federal government for those students that are in the National School Lunch Program. So there's really just a shift going on between those line items of recovering the cost through the National School Lunch Program and federal support. State support is much more modest than the federal support, doesn't have that much of an impact. So I mean, revenues collected, this didn't have too much for us to worry about bringing items forward into the tentative budget. Again, overall, it does kind of seem to balance itself out, and it's in pretty good shape on the revenue side. Expenditures, we did have some issues. It's the salaries, benefits, they're usually, you know, pretty tight. The only thing that we have some problem with sometimes on salaries are overtime. We did have some elevated overtime for snow removal, and we had a rough winter, and so we had a little bit of that for our CMG staff. It was a little bit of subs over, but overall, we're pretty tight between those two line items, salaries and benefits. The purchase services is down, but it's really not, because I did not make an adjustment for some accounts payable for transportation. We still have two and a half months of Westway bills that have, were not paid, and we're not ready to be approved for payment, because we're still reviewing them. They didn't provide all the information we needed to support those. So that will come up as an expense. But on the other hand, if you look at the capital outlay a few lines down, I did make an adjustment there, but there was some carryover from last year's bills that fell into our capital outlay this year. And so I didn't fine-tune it that way. And overall, the capital outlay adjustment would more than offset the purchase services. So again, we probably have a little more positive news when we get the CAFR about cleaning all this up. The other item that really does kind of move into the next year is the tuition. And I'm going to get into that a little bit more when we talk about the tentative budget. It is up. We did expect it to drop last year based on the enrollments and the kids in the pipeline at the beginning of the school year. We did have some big move-ins. We did have some kids stay longer than we thought, in terms of in-out-of-school and in these separate placements. And as I get into the tentative budget, I'll show you a little chart that Scott was nice enough to pull together for me, just so you can visually see what's happening with enrollment. It is not a permanent change, at least right now. This is a very volatile area, it could become permanent, but we do see a bubble right here that's going to hit us next year. It caught us this year, and it's going to hit us again next year, because the kids won't be aging out yet for a couple of years. So there's a, yes, Nancy?
So just to be, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
Well, I did. So just to be sure, just to be clear, this tuition is for the amount of money we're spending for tuition for some of our students to be paid.
It's vocational placements at TCD, and that's the small part of it. And the bigger part of that are special needs students that are placed in other, either in other schools, other programs, in other centers, Easter seals, different special programs, and/or residential placements, which are very expensive.
But the preceding page, the tuition was what we were collecting from our families.
We collect mostly for summer schools, sports, summer sports camps, that's what that tuition was, yeah. In fact, I should probably retitle that, because I think it is misleading. We did have a couple tuition students several years back, kids who were coming and attending, but it's probably, it should be renamed so that it's not so confusing. You're right, you had that correct. Town budget, we look for trends as we start to build the tentative budget. The revenue areas, P taxes, the property taxes are locked to inflation, CPI. U, we did have a positive movement on the new construction, you know, very small, but it's the right direction from, you know, about .3 to .5, so it's moving, and this is a very small range that it moves anyways. So it's going in the right direction. We do have, I imagine you all are aware that the I Tree Farm is being developed and subdivided.
That drove by.
We'll get an immediate impact from that of a contribution fee of about $170,000.
Yeah, I feel better now.
But then long-term, that will be helpful in terms of having some new homes there. Now, it could also bring students, so there could be an impact there as well. But we do have a few developments throughout the district coming in. Interest is still very nominal, but a tiny increases possible. It's starting to edge up, we do think it's going to, and right now, when you're only getting, you know, 30 basis points, 35 basis points is, you know, 12% increase. So it's small. And really, when we get to the very end of this, as we talk about the bonds and the refunding, and where we're going to go long-term with our bond rate, the interest is really the one thing that we need to keep on our minds, that it is going to be a very, it normally had been a very steady, positive revenue source for us. We've really hit an unusual lull here, and it probably won't be two years, but let's say five years from now, I do think we'll be seeing much more robust interest income. And then, and as that starts to build back, we need to be very careful about what we allocate that to, and not use that so much for regular operations as much as perhaps for capital projects and big faucet things that we can turn on and off. So it's very tough doing this. It's tough for us to live without $2.5 to $3 million of interest income out of our operating funds while we're doing it, and that's something that's on the horizon. So, but it's still nominal, and it's still going to be, you know, pesky for us. Fees and other local revenues, we kept flat. We didn't increase fees, we didn't increase our food service lunch price. 20% cut in state aid, but it is offset on our projection, or at least our tentative budget, because our special ed costs did go up last year, and we get a reimbursement every year that's based on that. So it was offset a little bit, as long as that doesn't get further prorated. There is Senate Bill 16, which would basically take state aid and all those mandated categoricals, which are reimbursements for special ed, throw it into a bucket, and then say, here it is, all yours, use it the way you want. To me, I see that as basically eliminating our state aid, because those mandated operations are still going to be required. We're still going to need to bus our special needs students, and so those mandated categories are still going to be there. To me, it's a bit of a shell game, if that ever happens, but that's out there. But this year, it did cut by, we were expecting it to go down by $420,000 in state aid, which really will hurt other schools a lot more than us, but it will hurt us. Federal is still okay. ID and title ones are seeing reductions, but the E-rate, Medicaid, and other things are coming back and helping us. You know, I'm always nervous about what happens with these two categories. The only good news is that federal is only about 3% of our total revenues, and, you know, that could only hurt us that much. And I don't see that all going away. So here is a picture of the revenues and the tentative budget. Property taxes, 2.2. It's 1.7 of... Property taxes, two point two. It's one point seven of CPI. And the balance of that would be new construction, so a new, you know, the property taxpayer receives a one point seven percent increase based on this levy. This is the two thousand and thirteen levy for that calendar year that we, that we apply all to this one year intact. Replacement taxes, we're, we're being really, you know, positive, saying it's going to go up again. We're going to take that mode. Interest income, we're saying we're going to, we're going to catch a little bit increase there. We get into food services, you see a big increase there. There is going to be a, a big push by Quest to, to improve our National School Lunch Program and just participation by kids that are not in the, the program. We have been working with them to put fountain service on the line. Now, it can't be pop, it can be flavored water. And they believe that it's been a huge factor in them getting more kids to go through the line because they want that, that flavored water and to do those types of things. So, so they're already starting, and we've, we've worked very hard, Jim and, and actually the CMG staff have worked very hard to make sure that that gets done for them so that they can implement that. It's going to, I think August eighth is the date that it's supposed to all, all come together. So, we're, we are looking for that program to be beefed up a little bit and to see some, some positive collections going through the line. The only other thing really is the net change in general state aid down towards the bottom, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. But it is going to be offset, we think, with the change in federal aid. And this is compared to last year. The allocations are dropping for IDEA and Title I, but we, we have carryover that we're going to be able to, to, to use this year and some of those grants. So we should, we should see some positive growth, if you will, overall. But we have some other things that are coming in the federal aid next year that should help us. I don't know that that's going to be a long-term trend, though. On the expenditure side, we have trends that we could look at. Most major items are tied to the revenue stream. Salaries and benefits are seventy-eight percent of our expenditures. Bussing and food services are also, starting after this year, branded contracts, but they're tied to CPI as well. So that, that will help keep those in line. Capital outlay, to some extent, is discretionary. We've been using that aggressively. We added another three hundred thousand dollars this year. We, last year, we had a one point eight million dollar allocation for capital outlay. And if you recall, when we approved the projects, the, the budget, the forecasted budget amount was only one point five million for this year. But we, we built it with projects up to one point eight million. We wanted to put those on the table and see where we ended up for this. And so we, we still have built in another three hundred thousand dollars of capital outlay because these items are going to get done within the next year or two or three anyways. And so we're trying to go after and get these things done now. There's, there, it doesn't hurt us to do it. We're not wasting and doing things too early. There are things that we just will need to get done. And we can, so we're, we're going aggressive with capital outlay in this tentative budget. Larger items not tied to revenue stream, utilities, very volatile. We really learned that last year. Way over on the utilities. Special ed, volatile with the, the, you'll see in a minute, the enrollment for tuition children and how it's going to impact us. And so let's look at the special ed a little bit. They're bumping up this, this next year. We have, for those who don't know, we don't have a lot of discretion. When a student comes to us, and particularly from a feeder school district and is already placed out of district, it's hard to pull that kid back in. We do do it, and we have success at it, but we're not able to get a hundred percent of those kids in. And some of them obviously shouldn't be in, in district. We can't serve them the way they need to be served properly. We, we do have the responsibility for students, if they don't graduate, till their twenty-second birthday. It used to be twenty-first birthday, but now, several years back, they, they changed that to twenty-second birthday due to a court case, due to a court case. We have an unusually low number aging out next year. And this is going to have a short to midterm impact on our tuition costs. We do have some positive things with the, we see the people, the pipeline for the feeders and some of those are dropping. They've been elevated for the last couple of years, but it's too early to really call. But there are some positive things on the horizon with that. Outplacements equal much higher costs, smaller pupil-to-teacher ratios, obviously, aids and other special supports. And then there's higher transportation costs because they're not on our normal buses and they're often going long distances and sometimes with only one or two children in a, in a vehicle. So this is the, what Scott was nice enough to construct for me. And this is really what the snapshot was at, at the end of the school year of this last year. In the eighth grader, the, the kids coming in, so this far-left column are the eighth graders coming, seventeen kids coming in. We don't have any sixteenth grade, which are the just under twenty-two-year-olds aging out. And we don't have any from the eleventh to twelfth, usually there's a good number that, that either graduate or, and then we don't have normal number from there either. So we're going to see a bump. And that's why you see our tuition costs are going to be projected to be higher for a second year in a row. It's just the flow of these kids as they come through. Things could change and this is a volatile population. Some of these children move out of districts, some, some children just drop out. Some of the, you know, there's a lot of things that happen with these kids, but this was a snapshot. And so we took, I won't say it's worst-case scenario, but we took a bad-case scenario as we projected our tuition costs for next year.
Mark, a quick question. Does that also include our students at SASED? Or is that, okay?
SASED, yeah. Yeah. That SASED is one of the outplacement, yep. It's overall, if you add it up, it's about seventy-seven kids compared to last year, roughly sixty. So we have, we're up a pretty significant number with the placements.
That's interesting.
Strategic plan items, items that are being addressed and, and actually Gina and, and the other administrators have really covered these things pretty well. The STEM, we're going to the second level. ADV, we're going to the second level. Common Core, you saw the ELA and the math that we're moving forward in those areas. And I'm, I got to tell you, I'm really proud. When I talk to other school, high schools, they're, they're not at this level yet. My peers, I say, so what are you doing about this? They are not here yet. So I'm really proud. And one-to-one learning is something we're really expanding from two hundred to fifteen hundred. I think you have a lot of information on that. Obviously, that was done to kind of group kids so the teachers will have full classes of kids. So it's, it's, it's higher than we thought we were going to have when we started, at least I thought for this year. But it's, but it makes sense to do it. And so I, I, I think we're going to, we're going to work hard to support this in the budget. And so here's the expenditures. And if you look at the percentage change column, the total is two point nine percent. That's a big number compared to our, our two point two percent revenue side. So that's where we're, we're seeing some pain here in terms of growth. And if you look at salaries and benefits combined, it's right online with our, our CPI. It's two point two with our revenue stream, excuse me, which is guided by CPI. So, two point two, that's what we held all of our negotiated contracts to this year. It was a little painful for groups, but it was also what we needed to do. Purchase services, that's up largely because of the transportation increase. You recall when we approved that contract, it was about a twenty percent increase by itself. So that's, that's what we're seeing there. Again, we are working to, to lower that increase, but right now we have to put it in, into the budget. We're working, I'm working with them to, to buy all of our fuel directly. And so we can save sales tax on that. We're also looking at all of our routes through Versatrans. We've asked them to process that and try and just reduce the number of routes, which it could also help. It helps them as well because then they have fewer drivers to have to work, pull together. We have been monitoring the, the driver pool that they're working with. I think the nineteenth, they had a big promotion. They feel they're on track for hiring the right number of drivers. We, we've asked for a July fifteenth, a July thirty-first, and an August fifteenth update. And so they think they're on track to do it. And so we've been monitoring them a little, a little more closely. Capital outlay is, is, well, actually, supplies is down primarily because of the utilities. I mean, the utilities really killed us last year in the building fund. And we're, we're just looking for a normal year, a little bit worse than normal, but not, not as bad a year as we had last year. So that's, that's a big part of the supply drop. But also, the buildings themselves, when they develop their own, they, they each get a per pupil allocation. They're able to allocate those dollars where they want. And they've been, they put a few less dollars on supplies. I think there's more focus on professional development this year with some of the initiatives we have. And so I think they've reallocated some of their own funds in the building level. Capital outlay, looks like it's down, but again, last year's actual is overstated. And I think if we were to pull that off, you'd see the, an increase on the capital outlay. Primarily, it's going to be for the new Chromebooks. That cost is, it's in there in full at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We still have the option of leasing that and, and there's, there's not a lot of benefit to me to doing that other than stretching that out over several budget years. If, if we were given the, the need to balance this flat out, I would, that's one of the things I would do. But we would ultimately pay more interest by leasing it somewhere in about three to half percent in a, in a lease compared to just paying for it with our own money that we're only earning point three five interest on. So, I'd prefer to pay it outright. And then the tuition bump at the end. We're, we're thinking it's going to be another big hit on the tuition. It's, it's very likely it'll come in that way. It's, we're, we're hopeful that it'll come in less, but it's very likely that we'll see that bump.
A question about the tuition. How much are we reimbursed for that, if any?
It's a complicated formula. There's, it has to, depending on the placement, and there's kids that range from all over the, the chart. We get reimbursed for the percentage that is over our normal operating cost. And it's based on the individual student, if they have a one-on-one aid. So, you know, I think we're, we're in the ninety percent of, of the grouping costs that qualify for that, but it's not ninety percent of everything over our operating cost. So it's very unique. It's student-based.
Of over and above our normal costs is what you're saying?
Not, not ninety percent of that. It's, it's more complicated than to simply to say, whatever our normal costs are, it's ninety percent over that. It's not. There's, there's a, there's a certain amount that we eat first. There's also, depends on what the other pieces are. Transportation is reimbursed. Transportation is reimbursed at a different level than the tuition. I mean, I would say, it is, it is a driver and we, we get, I mean, some of that is also paid for with IDEA money.
IDEA, right.
So it's a big mix, right, quite honestly. I can't.
But you couldn't really say, well, we're going to have.
Dollar or percent that would really apply across the board. I could probably get it for you.
I was just curious because we can count on something. Is that what you're?
We can. I mean, we can and do.
A small thing.
I know that one, one that's going to hurt us and then the good way is that residential placements, which we do have a very expensive student using a residential placement, and they've reduced that down to fifty percent. It used to be in the ninety-eight percent range. For us, that one item is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We pay a lot of money for that kid. And, and, you know, it's necessary.
It's what they need. That's right.
It was a painful one. So it's a little bit different based on where they're placed. Tentative budget, I don't know if you noticed, I work this in reverse. Usually I start with fund balance, but I'm giving you this at the end. More of a buildup, you know, this is kind of a, it's the only, about the only segment you're going to have tonight for me. So our fund balances, and, and let's work with the revenues and expenditures first. The green, in the green tones are, you know, eighty-three million, nine hundred thousand over eighty-two, five, you know, about one point four million excess. Most districts stop there. That's what most districts deal with. We also are using our transfers and we're, we're sending money out of our operating funds to pay for capital projects and debt service. I'm very proud of that, that we've been doing that. It's, it's a strong thing for us. We do have an option to flip switches if we had to. As safety nets, it, I would absolutely prefer not to do that for several more years until we can get to where we can issue some really low-priced debt. And I think we'll need to, and I'll, I'll get to that in a little bit. But this, you can see, though, is a huge difference if you go to the bottom line. One point five million dollar difference in the transfer column. And that's because we are, in this, in this tentative budget, hoping to issue a refunding bond and use three-fourths of every savings from that to retire some of the debt that we've been relying on from the operating funds. And what that in fact will do, it'll bounce up our, or at least our, help our, our operating funds stay higher. Now, it's only seven hundred and sixty-six thousand higher. So if we didn't do that, we would be sitting with a deficit for these two years. Because it would be one point five million minus seven hundred and sixty-six, or about seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. And then we would have to go to different approaches to balance the budget, which would be, again, leasing out things and spreading it over multiple years. So all things that are valid, possible things to do, but this is, in my opinion, is the most effective way to use our resources. Because we're not paying interest on leasehold things. We're not, you know, we, and we, we will get more than one year of, of value out of those Chromebooks, but we, we're going to be able to eat the cost in one year. Very possibly, if we use those Chromebooks in the following year for total rollout, if the board agrees or decides that it's appropriate to charge students, we can recover some of the costs when we do that because those will be part of the Chromebooks that we roll out. If we, if we decide to eat the entire cost, we'll have to work on that. But, so there's, there's positive things that are at play here. Again, if you look at the very bottom, two point two percent increase for revenues compared to last year, two point nine percent in expenditures because we've, we've pushed harder on a couple expenditure items this year. State issues. I've used this in about eight different presentations and I had to, I had to finally show it to you guys. State, state issues, pension bill reform, it's been stated to adjudicate constitutional issues. There's still a possibility that that reform, even though it's not in that bill, but that the, the final resolution to the reform is to move those costs down to us. So that's roughly two million dollar black eye that could come back to us if they use seven percent or eight percent in that range and phase it in. But that's, that's the size of that possibility. It still isn't resolved. I know I keep crying wolf, but I can't believe each year we get another, through another year, and they haven't gotten to resolution on some of these. Senate Bill sixteen is the legislation that men our bill that would, would like to reallocate resources, our state aid, basically, and even a little bit more of our mandated cats to other schools throughout the state. And, and I understand the rationale with that, but it would hurt us. State income tax, if it goes back to three percent on January one, that's still not resolved. That would hurt us. And then the, obviously, the governor race, two very different platforms in two different directions. So this next year, I think, even if we don't have all these things resolved, some of it will play into our future. So to me, it's the right time to fortify the operating funds. That's, that's why I, I laid this all out here. And that's, that's what you're going to see in the next minute.
I'm sorry, but could you remind me, in terms of like full institution of the one-to-one, what we project that will cost us per year?
Well, we don't have the, I mean, we're probably going to be one-third done here for five hundred thousand dollars this year. Actually, Rod was getting some quotes and it, it might be lower than that. They're becoming lower. I, I would say that's probably what the total, total cost will be. It's, it's very, I've talked to several people to try and get a handle on this. The assumption has been that the Chromebooks will last four years. You know, you buy them and maybe let them keep them for you. The reality is that the first ones that they're going out are saying, oh, maybe only three years. So that'll add another layer to this. So, we're working on, on, right, type of book. I think the technology is getting better. So, and they don't have, they don't have many years of experience with these yet either. So, there's not too many schools that have had them out for three years to even know. But they are making them so that they're somewhat replaceable. And actually, I talk like I know what I'm saying here. Really, Rod is, Rod is schools, very well in this area. And I've talked to the, the leasing guy, actually, who, who does this and then remarkets these. And he goes, I really don't have much of a remarket after three or four years. There's like twenty-five dollar, there's almost nothing in terms of remarketing these items. But they are very inexpensive to replace things like the screens and things like that, fifty dollars or so. So, so there is, there's kind of a, I can't really tell exactly, but that's a good number to go with. One and a half million is probably where we'd have to go, probably a million dollars to go full bore next year or something in that range. We'd have to really sit down. Timeframe, just so everybody's aware of, of what it involves, the July action is, is necessary tonight if we can, as a tentative budget. It's, we send copies out to libraries, to our own buildings, and that'll be on our website. Because it has to be out for thirty days as a tentative budget. We don't have thirty days between now and our August meeting. So we're just going to let it sit out there and we'll actually have another opportunity in August to discuss things. We can make changes until the final budget's approved. But we do need to have a budget that's been on display and that we can approve by September thirtieth. That's a key date. That's by law. You have to do it in the first quarter of your fiscal year. And so we're targeting right now to having the, the required hearing and approval at the September fifteenth regular board meeting. And, and with an opportunity that we can, if, so what I'm saying is, if, if not everybody likes this tentative budget, that's fine. But let's approve it and let's agree on what it'll be by, by September. approve it and let's agree on what it'll be by September. It's just, it gets a very, we'd have to have a separate scheduled meeting off of our normal schedule to get 30 days in from some, you know, tentative out if we don't do it tonight. And I apologize for that, but I mean, it's the way the meetings are falling.
It's fine.
So I'm sorry, I didn't, kind of jumped right into my long and short-term debt service goals. Again, I wanted to take a bigger overview for everybody. Current outstanding long-term obligations are $64 million of principal and interest outstanding as of June 30. A big portion of that is tied to the 97 master facility plan additions, as well as life safety bonds that we've issued, as well as even working cash bonds over the history of the district. So going back further. So that's really, it's all referendum, or non-referendum, but would be subject to referendum now. About 21% of our statutory limit, which is 263 million, is out there. You only consider the principal portion of that for calculating what your statutory limit is, and it's 6.9% times sure sets valuation. And so that's, that's how we get to 263 million, and about 21% of that is principal. But you also include the debt certificates and all the other operating fund debt that we use. It's not just debt service levy type debt. And that's what I'll get to in a second. About 18.4 million of the debt that we issued was done without increasing the debt service tax rate, because it is operating rate. 16.7 million of that is outstanding as of June 30. So 16.7 of the 64 million outstanding is debt certificates and operating type debt. And it's about 20% of the total out when we talk about our monthly, or I'm sorry, our annual costs. And we've been, you know, using the operating funds to retire. And this is what it looks like in total.
That's just so cool.
It's, it, the yellow bars are the items that are, the debt, annual debt amounts, being funded by the debt service levy. The green is being funded by the operating funds. You can see that the green goes out a bit farther. This, the number, the years on the bottom are the levy years, which can be very confusing. So that's a 2013 levy. That was the levy amount on the top there for the yellow. And then the bottom, that was the amount that we expended that year. But, so it's confusing. So if you want to know what fiscal year that applies to, you add two years. So the 213 tax levy is our 2015 fiscal year. And I, I had it one way and I had it two, both ways in two different graphs, and I decided just to go back to levy year, because I wanted to go back far enough for you to see this, this levy. So that's what our total outstanding looks like. This is just the top section here. This is just the debt service levy type debt. And you can see, it's going to drop off really hard in the 2018 levy. So that'll be your 2020. It's out there, but it's, it's going to drop off by 16 cents. And that's a positive. I mean, that will, the 2017 is when we'll basically be done with the 97 bonds issued. It's a 20-year bond for the master facility plan. So that's what the big jump is. Those are referendum-approved bonds, and that'll fall off in 2017. That's what we promised the taxpayers, and I think that's what we will do. We'll see a large amount of those. We've had other debt that'll also be part of that, but that's the biggest chunk of that. We talk about the long-term objective. I mean, I'd be very happy if we could keep our total debt from 10 cents and then eventually down to a nickel. That'd be very low taxpayer impact. In our district, a nickel would, would be probably enough long-term for us to fund some capital projects, some big capital projects. The thing that'll get in the way and that, if we, I'm going to flip this to the next page, future issues. Master facility plan decisions could get in the way of that. Any really significant construction or cost related to that, and mandated life safety projects. We are starting a life safety review. It's required to be done every 10 years. We're starting it now. I think it's this, this year, 2014-15. And so that'll start the clock running. We'll have 10 years, I think it is. Is it five, 10? Yeah, it's 10 years.
To finish it.
Five years, yeah. It's five years to actually have the projects done. So that's something that we would probably have to go after our debt service extension base if we didn't have any other way. And it all depends on what items pop up. And so we'll be monitoring that to find out how big a number that can be. So both of those would be limited to our debt service extension base unless we went to referendum. Certainly not something I am contemplating. Debt service extension base is compliant with the tax caps, and it's about 5 cents. And if I'm, I'm going to go back now, that's, that's really that nickel down there. That's our debt service extension base from prior bonds that we issued. So it would be extending that going forward. In the interim, there'll be some other recalls or some called bonds that we can do, which we may be able to lower the bars. Those is five, actually, 2013 levy's already done. The 14, 15, 16, and 17 levies, we can, we'll be, when we do this refunding, we'll actually be knocking that down a little bit. So, you know, it won't change it from 21 to 20 cents. It'll, it'll still be almost 21 cents. But it'll, it'll be, we'll be knocking down that bar a little bit. And what we do future recalls, they're from the, there's actually none of this debt service left that we can do and recall. The future recalls will be, will be our own operating debt that we can call early and refinance. So we'll have some savings in our operating funds that way. Flip through this. Short-term objectives now, though, that's where we're getting to what's tied into the tentative budget right now. Obviously, this is from strategic plan 4.4A, prepare your budget in a manner of maximizing use of available resources towards achievement of district goals. Refund all callable debt to reduce interest. There'll be 2016 and 18 are the next opportunities. But again, those are just for debt certificates that are not debt service levies. Then this short-term objective, we use a portion of the savings to support the operating funds and educational initiatives. So the refunding of the 2004 bonds, just in case, you know, the callable means that they're callable as of December 1, 2014. We can pay off $22.8 million of the principal at that time. The interest rate on those remaining bonds as of December 1 is roughly 4.75. These were the bonds at the very end of a 20-year period, and that's why they have the higher interest rates. And it actually, when those bonds were issued in 2004, that was just about the going rate. I think the whole issue was probably a 4%, 3.8 to 4% total cost. That's, you know, we were also earning 4% on our interest. So, I mean, that was our world at that time. We can refinance those bonds at 1.35% and maybe even a little lower. TIC, which is total in costs. It includes costs of issuance, costs of paying the underwriters and everybody to sell the bonds, and there are legal fees that are involved with Chapman and Cutler to have them approve the bond. That'll generate a savings of about $2 million. My proposed use of the $2 million, and that's what's in the tentative budget, is to, well, first, the total impact is, is very nominal. It's less than, you know, a penny. It's, it's $12 a year on a $300,000 house. So it's, it's very nominal if we rebated the entire amount or just refunded it and let our rate drop a little bit. My proposal is, for us, is to pay off other current debt, about $1.5 million, and, and use about a fourth of it for reduction in the debt service, about half a million. And the 1.5 million really, before I get to this next slide, the 1.5 million is to, for us to fill in our debt service extension base a little bit, but not to go too far out that we start to issue more expensive bonds. And if we tack this little piece on to our refunding, the legal fees and all those things don't change. And so it's, it'll be a very, very efficient issuance. And so that's why the timing is right to do that. It coincidentally hit us when we're really pushing on some other initiatives and when the state is dropping their support for us. So, and really right on, I think, the threshold of all those things at, at the state level that could still come and hit us. So my, my recommendation is that we, we kind of bolster up our operating funds a little bit here. Take some of these refunding savings, pay off other debt with it that's out there, and hold that money for that rainy day that's coming. We could always, I'm not saying I'm going to recommend it right now, but we could always use that money to abate taxes later on in the debt service. If we say, if none of those things happen at the state level and everything, we get more money from the state and things are great, we can always use those reserves to abate our debt service levy. So what it does is having it in our operating funds, we're in control of it, and it's just a, I think, a more prudent move for us with all the things that are coming in. But the timeline for that is a little, you know, we can go a couple ways. We can go as early as August or September. We could possibly even go to October. The sooner, obviously, I think, the better, because we would be able to get moving on this and have the, what we take out is some of the interest rate risk if we go sooner. If interest rates do bubble up a little bit, it gives us a longer period of time to wait until the market kind of bottoms out. I've looked at competitive sales and negotiated sales. They're really, I think you can find that you win and lose with each of those. On this issuance, the rates are so low. If we do a negotiated sale, we can wait for the right day and pluck it, and we'll get that 1.31. I'm pretty, pretty confident. But if we wait till October to do it, there's a greater risk. I'm not saying we can't, but I'm just saying it's, that's what we, that's the rate risk that we have involved. There's two steps, two resolutions. One is the intent to issue the bonds, and the second is for a public hearing, very standard. September, October, regular meeting, we would have to have that hearing. People could comment on the refunding and the issuance. October or November, regular meeting, there would be approval of parameters bond resolution. We've done that in the past where the board president and the superintendent agree, and we would agree that there would be a certain percentage that these bonds couldn't exceed, so that when the right day hits, the superintendent and the board president would sign a document and say, execute the deal. And that's, we've used that three or four times now in the district. And that's, that's all of it. So.
Is that all?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I tried to make it a little bit longer than Gina's.
[laughing]
I'm not sure if I succeeded.
That hurt.
And you succeeded.
There's a lot there. I guess the key thing is in the action item tonight is to approve the tentative budget. And that's, for the district overall, is important to just have that on the, have that on the street so that we can, you know, make adjustments to it. You can change the budget all the way up until the final approval. It's set that way so that if people come to the hearing and are swayed the board, we can make that adjustment on that date.
Are you saying, Mark, the, the whole issue about the debt resolution and the refinancing, would it be better if we were to make a decision, let's say, tonight rather than August? Or are you saying August is sooner?
No, I'm just saying, we, if, I'd like, I'd like the board to tell me if there's concerns, and they would say, no, we, if the board said, we don't want to do this, then, you know, it would change what we would bring to them in August in terms of the resolution. It would be a different amount. We would change it in the tentative budget. I mean, I think this is, puts us in the strongest position, but.
Yeah, for sure.
There's, the only action tonight is a tentative budget to get it on, to get it on the street. But I would like to know if there's really strong feelings, and if we have a, because we'll want to know in August to, we could even wait till September, if you want to wait until it's formally approved, to start the bond resolution piece of it. So we have time. We can't call them until December 1. Can't, you know, retire them until December, but we'd like to get, you can get it all going up to three months ahead of time. You can get the money in your hands up to three months ahead of time. So we could start this whenever we want.
Thanks. It's a very exciting proposal.
So let's start with the questions or issues about the tentative budget?
I support it.
Do we have a motion?
No, we're not.
Not there yet.
Not there yet.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Let's just do it.
Let's get it over with.
I don't, does anybody have any major concerns? That's what you were looking for, right?
I don't.
I don't.
I commend you.
Nice job.
Wonderful planning.
Well, this is, you know, it's complicated, and I appreciate you sticking with it and trusting us. So thank you.
Appreciate the work you do.
Any comments about the refunding? It sounds to me like a good idea. I know we don't need to come to anything tonight, but I just did that to my morning. It's a great idea.
I'm good, I'm good. Yeah.
Freedom of information requests.
We have, I don't think we had any this month. We did?
We did.
Yeah, we did have.
Sorry, it sounded...
Yeah, a couple sent it to us.
I think there were seven. I threw your poor home all at once, yeah.
There were a couple.
Boom.
You're right.
Yeah. Yeah, we did read them. I think you sent them to us. Yeah, and they're on the agenda as well.
They've all been attended to.
They're not on my screen.
They've all been attended to, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we move on to the consent agenda then?
Yeah. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay. Chair Pavicic? Go ahead. I'm sorry. Chair Pavicic?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
No.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Recommendations for action?
No.
Oh, we did, now we have the recommendation for the tentative budget?
I'll move that we accept the tentative budget for 2014-15 for display purposes and establish 7:45 PM September 15, 2014, in an administrative service center community room for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Chair Pavicic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And thank, it was a lovely presentation, and it was easy to follow your logic, so thank you. For those of us who are a little changed.
Thanks.
Old Business Policy Committee report, second reading, Mike?
Right. So we have, we have these policies for second reading tonight. We haven't had any comments, right, have you?
No. And we haven't met either, so.
Right. So we're bringing these for approval tonight, and I so move that the policies be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Chair Pavicic?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Dates for the superintendent's evaluation?
I believe a week prior to last Friday, I sent dates that Bill Atia suggested for the superintendent's evaluation. I sent them an email to myself, but I don't think I brought my phone with me. I did.
I don't remember the dates, but it doesn't matter. I don't do any things.
Okay. He has offered the following potential dates. August 4th, 6th, 7th, 14th through 17th, September 4th, September 12th through 28th, October 2nd, and October 24th.
I know I saw at least one email about some of these dates in August.
The early August aren't good for, I won't be...
Probably, we're probably past that window for the early, because there's some paperwork we all have to do.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So how much time? Do you want to shoot for the September, those early September ones?
That'd be fine.
That would be fine.
It's usually, takes the place of a workshop meeting.
That's true. With all the other things we have going on, do you want to have another day besides?
Um...
Because I think you, you'd already said you had some things scheduled for September.
I do have things scheduled for September.
And October.
Actually, the, the September 4th date is a, is a Thursday night.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
And then our, and then our workshop would be the following Monday?
Mm-hmm, correct.
I think so. Is that Labor Day weekend? I think the previous weekend is Labor Day.
Previous, yeah. I think it's early this year.
Yeah. That's fine for me. I'd be okay on the 4th.
Yeah, I think.
Target September 4?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll notify Dr. Atia that that's the plan, and I'll get the information to the board, and I will get my information ready for him.
Great. And Julia, would you send out a reminder to the board numbers to save the date? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be a great idea. Thank you.
It's time for the second reception of visitors. This gives anyone in the audience an opportunity to address the board on any matter. Seeing none, we'll move on to communications and announcements. Report on Lend?
There's no report. Lend does not meet during the summertime.
Okay, thank you. SASED? Okay, thank you. SACID?
With SACID, their summer school program was, has been a huge success, and I think more students than ever signed up, which is good. And there's an ongoing issue with finding more space, or particular, for SACID programs, because our autistic program is growing, and that our transition program is growing as well. And some of the rental space is proving not quite as adequate as it once was according to new requirements. So Dr. Volpe does have a facilities committee as part of the board to be looking, but anybody that knows of space can let me know, and, or let someone here on the staff know. That's going to be an issue in the coming year particularly.
Thank you, Julia. Illinois Humanities, did you have anything to add?
Just very quickly, just a couple of things. I wanted to let you know about the variety of programs that the Humanities Council sponsors. One of them is, there will be, there is an ongoing thing called the Odyssey Project, which is really exciting. They provide free college-level courses in the humanities for adults living on low incomes. And they are provided at the University of Chicago and other prestigious institutions, and the graduates do really quite well. And they are taught also in Urbana-Champaign at the University of Illinois. And the students receive college credit, and it moves them along, and they are free of charge to those students, which is really cool.
That's good.
And then there are free events that are at the Chicago Cultural Center that come, that are, anybody can ask to be sponsored for a program. And they are, it's open to community groups, schools, and nonprofits. And everybody knows the Chicago Cultural Center. You probably know it's the former library, which is a beautiful setting. And it's, again, it's available to groups. And then there actually is, there's an ongoing project that is continuing conversations on the humanities and the experience of war. And unfortunately, we still experience that. There's an ancient Greek play about a wounded war hero abandoned by the military, and it stops being ancient when it's viewed through modern eyes. And that's being presented in Downstate. And that's just an example of the developing programs that the Humanities Council sponsors. And our September meeting will be in Springfield. We normally meet in Chicago, but we're going to Springfield in September. So we're branching out. We're trying to be more really statewide.
Thank you, Julia. The District 99 Educational Foundation, Chair?
We did not meet last month, and we will meet in August.
Thank you. Deb, anything on the Illinois Association?
I have nothing at this time.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to upcoming board meetings. The next board meeting is August 18 at 7:30 in this building. Oh, I thought you were saying something.
No.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved?
Second.
Any second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Enjoy your time. We'll see you in August.